Okay, we're ready.
Okay, this is the February first meeting of the Bristol Planning Commission. Welcome, everybody. We have a quorum by the skin of our teeth calling the meeting for order at seven oh five. Item one is to review the agenda for additional removal or adjustment of any items. Would like to split public comment. To have a public comment at the beginning of the meeting underneath item two. Be the first issue that item we take up underneath administrative matters or actually the second we'd approve the minutes and then take up a public comment section. Is there any other discussion as to modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll proceed. Item two, approval of minutes from one four twenty twenty one, entertain a motion to approve. Melissa seconds. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. We'll insert the public comment period here. Anybody have any public comment before the meeting starts?
Did you want Tom to jump on now?
Yeah, so Tom, if you want to jump on now.
Whoops, you muted, Tom. You muted, Tom. Hold on. Tom, there you go.
I've unmuted.
There you go.
Nice to see you, see some of you and meet some of you. I did have the pleasure of serving on this board for about eight years back about six years ago and they're back. So I very much appreciate all that you do for the community, having been there, serving in the same spot. The reason I asked to speak to the board was we, my wife and I, Carol and I own a number of properties in Bristol, one of them being the Duncy Block, which is the large building, Romanesque building right in the middle of town that is principally occupied now by Bristol Suites and also has two stores in it of a marketplace and Kimball Offices. It is a essentially an inn, most of it is anyway. And we at one point started turning apartments over into guest rooms and then came before the zoning board of adjustment, which existed at that time under prior zoning, just to clarify things, but there really was no zoning per se for what we were at that time. In any event, over over time since 2012, we've evolved from originally just one guest room now to seven. We in the early years weren't quite frankly, not all that terribly successful. Became quite a bit more successful over the years and now, believe it or not, in this time of COVID, are really quite busy. We think we do about 7,000 room nights a year. So it's it's a lot of people coming through and we've really been able to service the community quite well. An awful lot of people who come are folks that are visiting, but a lot of times they're out of town relatives of those of us who live here. You know, a lot of times for occasions like happy ones like weddings, not so happy ones like funerals and so forth. In any event, the reason I'm here is when the new zoning was written a few years ago, you created a couple different categories for lodging. One is a hotel, which under your code provides for more than 12 rooms. You another one is a bed and breakfast, which provides for less than six rooms and breakfast in there. And then you have one called an inn or guest facility, an inner guest facility. By in the definition, it says that it contains a dwelling unit for the owner or a resident manager and up to 12 rooms in the VB zone, which is the downtown zone, as you all know. And an indoor guest facility is permitted as a use. Hotel is a conditional use, but an inner guest facility is a permitted use. The reason I'm coming before you is there is an aspect of that that we never thought was a good idea and probably should have brought up a while ago. And that is the requirement that an inn or guest facility have an owner living on on present onsite. It's really not necessary. Carol and I have lived in the building over the years, but in the more recent years, over the last couple of years, we're there less and less. We actually have a place in out on the lake as well. And realistically, as we do, none of our kids seems to want the building. While we're trying to grow this business, at some point in time, we might want to sell it. In fact, we probably will sell it and hope it can continue to be an important part of the Bristol scene. But would like to have you consider changing that requirement. So that so it's not required that there be a resident manager or owner living in the building. I can speak further to that, but that's basically what the issue is that that I wanted to discuss with the board. That's clearly obviously within your jurisdiction, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, we are in the very initial stages. We've just received a grant for housing study in the village planning area, which is pretty much the village plus a little bit of down on Plank Road, a few surrounding areas such as that. That work will go on probably at least for the next year, quite possibly for two years. The grant is is a two-year activity. Through that process, obviously, we'll be looking at housing in the village and how to maximize housing, both from different demographics as well affordability. Within the scope of work for that activity that we've as a planning commission have developed, one of the aspects is to review things such as this that come that, you know, people talk to Chris or for that matter, the select board about the reasonfulness of the regulations and and how they get caught up into them every once in a while. So the effort will be to simplify the regulations. That's that means there's be a whole lot of debate and I don't even want to lead that we're gonna like approve this, but we will include it within that discussion. And and like I said, also, it's a year to two-year activity that we're looking at, so it won't be an immediate discussion or resolution, but I I think it's fair to say that we could or should could and should integrate that as well as some of the other aspects that we're about to endeavor on, looking specifically at housing and the health of the village.
Well, I had read that you were endeavoring to begin that study and and hoping to get the grant. And so I would encourage you to include this among the list of things that that be discussed. We're not in any particular hurry here, but we do believe that it's a mistake that was made, quite frankly, when it when it was put in there. But quite frankly, didn't speak up then, but want to speak up now. And as long as the board understands the concern and puts it on the list, then we're well satisfied. I would like to be when when the time comes and I'll try to pay attention, but when the time comes that it is discussed as the only owner of a any type of lodging facility in the community of Bristol would certainly like to be you know, be able to address it at that time.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
Okay, good, thank you.
Jim, Jimmy Quaglino, do you have any comments or you just hanging out watching?
I have one question. When a business decides to locate in town, who has jurisdiction over whether their business conforms with zoning, et cetera?
It it starts with me, Jim, as the zoning administrator. If it's not a by right use or if they don't agree with my ruling, it then goes on to the development review board. They then make a ruling and if somebody isn't happy with that ruling, they then move it up to the environmental court process.
The reason I asked, of course, is is a petition that was circulated to have licensing for a marijuana dispensing store in town. And I hope people realize that it's against federal law to begin with. And I was wondering if it goes on the ballot and people voted in, is there any recourse by the select board or the zoning commission to stop the that type of use?
Not not specifically as that use. I I've been spending a lot of time reading the statute on this recently. What what it would allow for, if it does pass, is it's treated as any other retail as though it would be on Main Street. What would happen would be it would be a change if there was a change of use, the they would have to apply for a permit. That permit then, if issued, there's a 15-day appeal period that anyone can appeal my decision. That's when you see those posters with the P on it in windows or on the end of roadways. During that 15 days, the public has the right to appeal the decision. That appeal then goes to the development review board, they hear the case, they make a ruling and the process goes there. Like I said, the next step would be if interested parties don't agree with that outcome, they then could move it along to the environmental court. So there is a mechanism, it's not a great one, but there are mechanisms there. Means you sort of have to be on your toes watching and what's going on around us. But that's that's the way the process works right now currently.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Just I have a question on that.
Yeah.
I so the the town of Middlebury just recently voted on whether to have a marijuana dispensary in town, I believe, and I thought that the state law said that towns could decide for themselves whether or not to approve such a thing. Meeting that?
That that is correct, and that's what Jim's talking about. So on on town meeting day, on the ballot, there isn't, there's the question. Will Bristol allow, will they opt into allowing retail marijuana sales in the town of Bristol? If it's voted yes, then Mr. Quaglino's concerns become what he's talking about where he has concerns whether it should be allowed. At that point, if if a permit was issued, then we'd go through the process. If it's turned down at town meeting day, it's a done deal for now.
I got it, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is a discussion of zoning administrators report. Do you have anything?
I got nothing. I was gonna talk about Tom Wells stuff, but Tom showed up, so I didn't have to tonight, so we're good.
Okay, so the next item is miscellaneous correspondence. Few things going on that may be of interest. The bike pedestrian advisory committee had their initial meeting on one twenty seven and organized. I've been in contact with the chair, which I can't remember his name off the top of my head, to express interest that we would like to as a board be on the copy list for their minutes so that we can kind of follow along with what they're doing. There was a community wastewater solutions virtual presentation that regional planning put on on the twenty sixth. It was hosted very well by, again, I can't, I'm terrible with names, I'm sorry, I apologize. And it focused a lot on some things that are going on over in the valley and how Waitsfield primarily to some degree, Wade Warren has set up funds to support wastewater improvements for businesses, not necessarily private residences. And how that all works, both from a financial point of view for the town as well as individual. There seems to be no magic. No magic here, there's a lot, there was a lot of discussion about pre-treatment as well as in-ground injection, which is typical of most places in Vermont outside the big cities. There was some discussion about basically a homeowner's agreement or an owner's agreement among common septic participants, if you will, that'd be similar to an HOA, but it would be basically just for the the septic system. I didn't really come away with anything that was like gee whiz information for us as we walk down on our path for the housing that we are going to be going on. That set webinar is on the Regional Planning Commission website, if you're interested in following up with it. There is a grant opportunity through AARP. It's a short period of of applications between now and March twenty second with a completion date of the activity by November thirtieth. I just toss that out there as let people be aware of that. I don't know if anybody's got a burning issue to pursue another grant or not, I'm not proposing to. And I think that kind of concludes some of the intermediate activity. Anybody got any questions on on that discussion? Good, well, we'll move on then. The next item is under item three is continuing business of the bylaw grant activity. We received official confirmation of our award and I sent sent it, I sent that email around with the the preparation checklist. It has a list of requirements. That became a whole lot more clear than through the grant process, although I think we were walking in step. Yeah, where those bullets are, Chris, that's great. Although I think we were walking in step with pretty much most of them and certainly were aware of some of the others. I personally found a discrepancy between these quote-unquote requirements and some of the baby steps that, excuse me, baby steps in progress aspects that the grant sort of alluded to, but nonetheless, here they are. And I think some of them are advisory, not advisory, some of them are just information as to strategies and whatnot, as far as the first few bullets are, and some of them are things that we need to do when you get down towards the two-thirds and the last blood or powder. Excuse me, I did incorporate these with the draft RFP that we're gonna talk about next. So I don't know if anybody, any anything here just really jumps out at anybody or else we'll look, be looking at this again in a few minutes when we look at the draft RFP. You know, crickets. Oh, here's cricket, so let's move on to the draft RFP.
Well, you can, I was just gonna say it's a pretty inclusive list of stuff.
It is.
For a very small grant, it's got a lot of requirements, some of which are easy, like avoid floodplain areas, some of which are much more complicated. But I don't have, I don't see any problem with any of them. I didn't realize there were going to be quite this many parameters to follow.
Yeah, I I concur with that. I think the one, the one that popped out with me and we probably can work on it is including prior parking waivers, you know, and we sort of informally do some of that down downtown, so.
Well, we, there's actually, when we redid the parking standards last time, there's actually verbiage in our current regs that addresses people having the ability to use on-street parking to count towards their parking requirements, the ability for like if a business has multiple shifts, that you don't have to count, this is based on number of employees, but you actually can break it out by employees per shift. So we we have some of that in place, I think, reviewing it and whether tweaking it or just come out, come straight out and state, these are the provisions that are currently in our regulations and we feel that they meet the needs of our community.
Good, so I wasn't totally in sync with all that, but that's good. Any other comments or questions about these bullets? Okay, so then the next thing to do is move along to the draft RFP, I guess.
Which one's that?
Scope of work, I think it's called. So little bit of bring in, bring in a few things out of the closet here. We, when we were putting the the grant together, we sort of, or I sort of walked on a path to get some pricing to support the grant and Chris, and that prompted Valerie to make some comments. So Chris and Valerie and I sat down and discussed how to procure, not only from the state's point of view within this grant, the requirements they have there, but within the requirements of the town or the desires of the town on how they would, how we should be procuring services. So Valerie had just finished up a RFP for engineering services for some sidewalk work over in Munsole Site. She graciously gave me that and I pretty much modeled this document after that layout that she had. The document's set up to focus, because it's engineering service, to focus on performance and experience, which as we scroll down through, we'll we'll see and hopefully discuss a little bit. It starts out with a background, which I basically dropped in, the goals and policies right out of the town plan. So I don't imagine there's a lot of discussion there. It just lists out and familiarizes our perspective consultant as to what we've written in our town plan. The next thing is to come into the discussion about the grant and then all those bulleted requirements that we just discussed are in there verbatim as to the background requirement for the state for the grant. Then the scope of work, if you, it should look familiar because this is what, for the most part, we developed way back when, when we were working on the grant for what we were thinking we wanted for engineering services or consulting services. So this should be very familiar with everybody. It did tailor it a little bit based on the change in scope that the state suggested we consider in light of the fact that they didn't fully fund the grant. And then specific to Tom's discussion tonight, two point, two point three really talks about some of those things that are out there that different individuals bring up that we need, oh, thank you, need to consider as we walk down this larger path, if you will. Scrolling down, again, it goes down through with the different aspects that we we think we want to look at. And then there's a task section, which probably we should slow down a little bit, look at. There, in support of the of the scope of work, there's some specific things that we probably should be thinking about and considering. In in this section, obviously, we probably should get a kickoff meeting to get everybody on the same page. I anticipate, I'm I'm suggesting underneath three point two that we have some sort of a training from whoever the successful consultant is to kind of consolidate and get us reminded up to speed for the background information that's within the state requirements. And then that would be its own specific meeting, I I think, and maybe, you know, we maybe want a couple hours or a few hours to really dig into that and understand that as we start to work. Then there's three point three talks about actual working with the planning commission. Some of the stuff that's in yellow, I'm looking for comment from Chris and or Valerie on. I've got, I'm sorry, I can't see it. Let me. So three point four talks about how how we will conduct our meetings. I'm thinking, or I'm suggesting that as opposed to how we worked on a plan or we had regional planning at every meeting and we we discussed things and then chewed on them and they came back, we may want to consider having a consultant come in, work with us on a meeting and then give us some homework, if you will, to discuss a meeting or two so that we wouldn't have sequential meetings and there would be some things that we would work on and discuss on our own. And my intent there is to is to economize the consultant's time, if we can and we think that's doable. I also mentioned that, you know, we're doing hybrid meetings. Some is possible, the consultant that we entertained could not be in town or the next town over. They may, we may be paying them an hour windshield time or something like that if we require them to attend every single meeting. So I left it that there's, we have two meetings somewhere along the line that would be in person, but they certainly would have the option to zoom in on meetings. Is there any thoughts or comments on three point four and three point five or three point four? Sounds good?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay, three point five talks about master documents. Ideally, this consultant should be coordinator on master documents. I believe we can give them an editable copy of our current view unified development regs. And then they should maintain a red line as well as a finished document so that as we go through the process, we or any interested party can see what we're changing through the process and make it really apparent there. So that, any questions about three point five or comments? Okay, three point six is has to do with timing of the project. I left this pretty vague, only only brought in the term of the grant, which is starting today and goes through January thirty first of twenty twenty four. And we've got a couple in, we've got an internship and we've talked about maybe more internships that would be nested within this, depending on how things go. So I think that's pretty open-minded and open-ended, I guess it is. And we have some flexibility over that time period, I I believe. Three point seven is deliverables or report reproduction, production. So we'd look to end up with a master document. And that would eventually become the document that we would put out to voter consideration. And then we would keep a permanent red red line as well as a PDF document or something that's convertible to PDF. We'd also be looking for the consultant to write the report for grant closure. There is a requirement that we let the state know what we've done and how we've complied with all the requirements that were in that previous section. So any questions or comments there?
So the only comment I have is on the timing. Once you have your kickoff meeting and you have a consultant finalized, maybe asking them to try to put together a timeline so that you have some goals and milestones so we know how we're doing. Said hey for it to be October of twenty four, and I was like, oh, God, we got all this to get done.
Right, so when you go down into their proposal requirements, there is a discussion about schedule.
Awesome.
So that would be tentative, but it would give you a good idea where, how they think that would play out. So I, item four is pretty much when we would go out to bid, when we would have proposals due and thinking everything was hunky-dory, we'd have the select board turn around and award soon after that. Five deliverables, we sort of talked about that a little bit, that we want information in an editable format. Any sort of databases work essentially will be transferred to the town. Any GIS data that is produced would fold into the planning commission at regional. Any GIS data that is produced would fold into the planning commission at regional planning commission requirements. That is, any questions with all two sections? Submission requirements.
Kevin.
Yeah.
I do have a question and this is more to the project timeline and I'm just getting a little mixed up here. I just wanted clarification. On the completion date of January thirty first, twenty four, is that just when funds run out for the grant or is that a deadline that something needs to be passed?
I don't know. I don't know. I need to pulse. I, I, uh, I am tending to pulse Jennifer Jenny La Boy. Because here's, here's what, where, where I'm thinking about that very same question is, um, in order for us to fold in with a regularly scheduled polling operation would be March of twenty twenty one, twenty three. And then that's like, what's that, like nine, 10 months before the end of this thing is done? So I think it needs clarify- clarification with the, um, contract, the grant administrators. We certainly could have this thing done and ready for voters to approve for mi- March of meeting of twenty twenty four.
Yeah, at least proposed to the voters.
Yeah, proposed to the voters, which to me makes sense. I'm not so sure. If I understand the cost to hold a special election, it might be more than it would be if we forfeit the 10% of the grant. So there's that little issue too. But yeah, you're, you're right on Rob that, um, it's not, it doesn't line in with, um, any sort of voter approval, normal voter approval sequence.
Yeah, Kevin.
Yeah.
I also had a, a thought and it goes along somewhat with what Chris was saying that we probably would want to set a date for the study to be completed that's earlier than the last date of the grant, the last day of the grant. Cause that seems pushing things right out to the end. And, and we might want to set some internal uh, milestones, you know, draft due by such and such a date. Final copy by final version by such and such a date. What, what, you know, I want to go back for a second and say, this is an amazing amount of work you've done, Kevin, and I really appreciate it. I was stunned to see how complicated this was, especially since the state told us we didn't have to do it, but we're doing it anyway. So thank you for doing this. Um, but I did think that maybe we want to think about those dates.
Yeah, so, um, I can, I can move that date back a little bit. I'm not, I would personally, and this is, this is certainly open for discussion, but I personally would look for the proposal from the, the bidders or the consultants to lay out a schedule for some of those intermediate days. But I think you're right. If we, you know, pull that date back a couple weeks or something to, so that we're not rubbing right up to the end of it.
Yeah.
Probably is wise.
You could almost pull it to January one for, that would give us thirty days to.
Figure out if you're in big trouble or just a little trouble.
Yeah.
Good point. So for submission requirements, um, and there are actually two submissions. One is a technical and then the other is a cost and they're separate deliberately so that the technical um, information can be evaluated independent of, of cost. So six point one lays out the technical proposal requirements, um, qualification, scope of work. And then within that scope of work is where I, where I'm thinking. They talk about their tasks, timeline, that sort of thing.
Yep.
Proposed schedule. Uh, resumes of P staff references. Um, interestingly enough, I just kept this line in there. The proposal shouldn't exceed twenty pages. Um, so that, I, um, I think with, with that in mind, we can start looking at capacity and you can start looking at capacity of, of the people that are proposing to do the work um, and, and their ability to lay it out in such a manner to accomplish it. And that's why I, I'm sort of thinking unless somebody has a strong opinion of it, that all these intermediate, intermediate goals and and once we start going, we can get a sense of that anyway. Does anybody have any comments or, um, desires on the, uh, technical proposal part? Okay. Uh, cost proposal. So just lay out what the costs are by hours, that sort of thing, pretty standard consultant selection, seven point one. So I've sort of said that the planning commission as well as zoning administrator and the town administrator, Valerie, would evaluate these proposals. Um, they're broken down into five categories. Understanding of the project qualifications of personnel, clarity of the proposal, understanding of the ability to meet schedule and demonstrated knowledge of smart, of the smart growth areas concept. So, um, and then there's some weights to them. Buddy, uh.
Smart growth areas is Adam. Term has been developed to cover certain things.
Yeah, if you go back to the, um, the list of things that the state is requiring, which is in one point three, one point two. They talk about increasing house choice affordability of, for smart growth areas. And then one point dot two, dot three, dot four are really subsets of that whole concept of what they term is spread growth areas. One point two, gonna page three.
So it's really, uh, starts.
Yeah, right there. So then it's that, that's, to me, that's kind of an introduction because it encompasses dot two, dot three, dot four, really. So their understanding of those guiding documents and, and the concept that the state has laid out within the grant is what that particular evaluation point would be.
I didn't know if they had something defined or whether they just thought it was a good idea. But it's just written out.
Yeah. I said, in, in my mind, it encompasses those four, first four items.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, I, I was just doing a quick uh, search here and it seems there's a, a statutory definition of it.
Oh no.
Act one eighty three. I'm looking at the Vermont Law Review. So anyway, I, I think there's some, I, I think that's, it's written down someplace, it appears.
So are we, are we comfortable using that term then?
I think we have to, don't we? It's, it's in the, it's in the grant award.
Yeah. Okay, it's the, it's the verbiage that they used in the grant. So I, I would be fine with that. It's a fairly common term that's used. This, it's not a new term. They've been using it for a while. We, we as a group may want to hone in on what that means before you do your actual evaluations or to come up with a subset of criteria, what that means, so you can evaluate fairly.
It does say the basis of the
Yeah.
Should we refer to the, that section?
I would. I mean, you're fine here.
You happy, Lloyd?
Yeah, I, I, I might be that way, but I didn't.
Okay, actually, you know what? Adding that, like you did, um, in like parentheses after the organization grants, do put the C-section one point two.
Okay. Anybody else happy?
So my, my only concern with it is you got a lot of people involved.
Um, for the selection.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm fine with it, but you got a fairly tight window to get it done. So is the the RFPs will show up, they'll be open, then they'll be disseminated out to the group. It, it's going to be tight from when they get it to when we need the, 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 their feedback. I don't know if you're gonna have a meeting in between there or not.
So, yeah, that's a good point. I, I was, I was thinking it would be an open meeting discussion or would it be? Is there, would it be executive session?
It might be executive because you are talking about contracts.
Yeah, well, it shouldn't be a meeting, it shouldn't be.
You, you could do a subcommittee, which they would have to keep meeting minutes. That'd be about the extent of it. Which the meeting minutes may be, these people met, they found their executive session and then at the end they from that they give whatever their recommendation is. But full order or subcommittee, that's the only thing I'm, I'm just thinking timeframe, trying to wedge it in there.
I, I agree. But I, I also wanted to have everybody have a chance to weigh in on that.
What was the timeframe? Yes. You don't give enough time. Actually, I'm looking at your data.
There's no meeting, uh, without a special meeting in two weeks, which isn't enough time to do anything.
Right. The only other option would be to push this March date out to the select words next meeting and that would allow you to have your, your regular scheduled meeting between there.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Cause I think everyone's feedback is, is very important on it. I just want to make sure that we have time to get all that feedback in there. And you could, and then it can also be a discussion. I mean, there's points of this where.
Actually, our regular meeting would be the first, the week before the, that.
Before, before the eighth.
March first is our next regular meeting. I was wrong, so.
But that's still, I think to Chris's point, it'd be good to give the select board some wiggle room and go to the next their next meeting, even if we met by regular meetings on first.
Yeah, it, yeah. Is, we could get the, you could almost put it, present the findings to the select board by the eighth, because we should have that following your first meeting. And then put the, their next meeting is their selection, selected by whatever the next meeting would follow in there, twenty second or whatever it is.
Yeah. Okay, so if there was an agreement, I'll move that date then. So seven, three, seven, four, once boilerplate. I think eight, go on to section eight, a lot of that's boilerplate too, unless somebody loves that kind of stuff. Insurance. And that's, and then section nine is clarifications and proposal due dates. So I was quick through eight, nine. Has anybody got any burning desires to talk more about?
Do we? I, I missed it. Is there talk of the format this, this needs to? Okay, right there, remind. Perfect. So I want to make sure we're asking for electrical and electric and paper copies of it. Which we did, remind. You, you asked for the six, what do you mean it's a separate technical cost? Shall be submitted in sealed envelopes and or, I would just do and a separate PDF document. Get rid of the or. Then you have an actual unsealing of the bids process, just to confirm the bids appear. And who qualified. So when, once they come in, that date that they're due, either that, the, the following day or whenever they're postmarked, these will be, they'll stand by the front desk here. Then you have an opening of the bids, just to confirm that, that who you have and, and that they qualify. It's just a standard bid opening.
Yeah, Valerie does all that.
Chad, yeah.
So.
I just had a question, just in general, I mean, it doesn't, for any of this, but, uh, how are the bed bids solicited? You just put this out to all the, um, all the consulting firms or how's that, is it posted?
So Valerie has a bid service. It's primarily for construction contracts. When I was talking to the state, uh, to Jake Emmerich, they have a, um, similar thing that's designed more for consulting services. And he offered to, uh, put it out on that thing. So it'll probably go out on, I'm anticipating it'll go out on some sort of electronic bulletin board for solicitation as opposed to specific invitations. Unless we got people we really want to have a look at it.
I mean, now, I, I think that's the best way. Cause then it's sort of equal, even playing field. You go, if you're in that field, you should be checking that every day just as you're searching for a job.
Sure.
Looking for business. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah. Kevin, I have a question. It's not specifically about, I, I think you did a great job. As I said, when I look at this, what we're asking people to do, and then I think we're talking about $10,000. Is, is that really a realistic amount to get this type of work? I, I have no idea. That's why I'm asking the question. They cut us back to a partial grant.
It is, it is, it is a lot of work for, to get some money. The other thing is I'm not convinced we'll get $10,000 proposals either.
Oh, right.
We, we, we've talked, we've sort of talked about that, that we have money in the budget for planning purposes this fiscal year and next fiscal year, which starts in July. And there, there's pros and cons to putting what our dollar amount is in there of our grant, although it's public information and they could probably figure out how to get that a whole lot quicker than I can. Anyway, but, uh, based on what, what we're asking for, I wouldn't assume this is a $10,000 package.
No, but if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is we would have the option to top that up if we wanted to, within, within a certain amount.
I, I don't see why not.
Yeah, I mean, just ballparking, you've probably got about easily available to you three to $4,000 a fiscal year. So you got another six to eight thousand, you could throw this if you had to.
And when, when we had talked about this before, we did, we cut stuff out, but we really didn't, you know, we were, Chris and Valerie and I were talking about, we were thinking around 15,000. So I, you know, and one little feedback I got from, uh, posting prospective consultants was a very similar discussion. So having said all that, put it on public. That's there. So, yeah, I, it's a lot of work, but I'm not, I don't know. That's there. So, yeah, I it's a lot of work, but I'm not, I don't know. Also, these people are used to doing this stuff, so I had some of this stuff might be boilerplate for them too, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll see what happens, obviously.
I just had a general question. Yeah, um, because I'm not familiar with, I know what the bid process is, but I'm not familiar with being involved with it. So if anyone who makes a bet bid, if they make the qualifications, the requirements that we have, it just automatically goes to the lowest bid? Or is um i- is that how it works, or is it who we feel would be the best fit?
It's the way we thought it's set up, it's it's who we feel would be the best fit. Now, having said that, if there is a a huge cost disparity and our number two is almost as good, but you know, half the money or something like that, well, maybe dollars do come, but the first the first cut would be an evaluation of performance, or evaluation of the qualifications, if you will. I, Rob, I don't want to put you on the spot, but as far as pricing work and um chasing chasing work from a consultant point of view, is there anything here really out of line for what you experienced with your firm?
So, to be honest, I don't have much to do with that uh aspect of the work, fortunately for me. But uh it it doesn't seem too too far out of line with what I have kind of seen from the outside, so.
Having just gone through this to buy a fire truck, I I think you're pretty close on mine. We we sent them a set of parameters. And then we went through and we scored all the parameters. And then those that made that cut, we then evaluated things like reputation, um references, and then went to the dollars. Um, and then it was also, at that point, we worked on negotiating the contract, one way or the other. Um, just be somebody comes in at fourteen, doesn't necessarily mean that that's that's what they are. I mean, like, when we bought the truck, it was okay, we want this and this, you included these three things in your in your, we don't want those in our, we don't want that, so uh we were able to do that some, so I I think this feels I like how this feels, because you you've got a good a good method of reviewing who each of the bids. It um equal playing field, it's not just a gut, it's not like we aren't comparing like who had the jazziest looking resume or that, it's there there's some meat potatoes behind what what we're looking for.
I know that sometimes funding requires that you go with a certain, you know, low bid or something like that. But if there's, if it's not a requirement of the funding agency or anything like that, then you know, not locked into low bidder only.
Yeah, I'd have to revisit the language uh from a state point of view, but this.
I don't remember seeing it, but I couldn't.
Underneath ten thousand dollars, you go out and get a couple informal prices and figure out what your best value is.
Right.
That's my recollection, but we should be sure of that. And then this format is right from how the town does their proposals, so that should inherently be okay. Okay, any final comments or thoughts? Okay, so we'll, I'll make those changes and then I'll get with Valerie and see how to get it out on the streets. So moving on to the next item is UVM intern and scope of work. I did send out.
Which one is that, Kevin?
So um local democracy orientation. So this slide, this slide that was sent out and is included in the in the prep package. And it kind of goes through the um the the initiation process or the orientation, initiation, orientation. So we can kind of understand where we're going to be going with our intern. Shannon has already signed up to kind of foster them, particularly on the physical character survey. One interesting thing I saw in here that um the group that's working on this, the surveys might want to consider is, they talked about um having some, a little side project, if you will, for down, I guess you could call it downtime, or where they're really not I don't say up to see, but this aren't getting coordinated with stuff to do. I I'm wondering if it's kind of something to keep tucked in the back of our head, is if that happens through this process with our intern that they develop a little video or something of of the process of town planning through our identification of uh goals and procedures and on to our our quest for grants and award on, and then from there go on to what the plan is for the grant and and how that is intended to be accomplished. I think, and I bring that up for a couple reasons, is it could be a great learning tool for the intern uh to really work through that whole process and understand it, because this is quite honestly for them to understand a local government a little bit better. And if it's done well, it could be a great thing to pop pop around so people can understand as a computing communication tool, if you will, what we're up to and and where we're work, how we're working through this grant activity, so um I think I think uh I think that's something that the um the group that's who by default is Jeff tonight may want to consider as a filler, if you will, um as that process goes along. Is there any thoughts or comments about about that?
I think it's a nice idea. I don't know how much time the student will have. They said six hours a week they would devote to this.
Right.
But maybe that, maybe that'll work out fine. Let's see how.
Oh, yeah. Yep, and and I and I I I want to make, we will, we will want to max, I'm sure maximize the use of the particular student. And you know, kids that age, kids that age, a student that age is a whiz with uh video and all that kind of stuff. So what what I have in my mind is a six-week project, they'll probably do in two days. But yeah, so I understand there's some limitations there, but I think um it's a great thing to tuck in the back of our mind is to the progression of that particular person or partic- particular effort. The next item is a physical character survey update, and I um I had made up a map which I just barely sent out before the meeting to everybody that included on the space, you can see on the spaces.
Okay, now with it, sorry.
So this is blocked into the the spaces where the density goes up to two thousand and seven density study, whatever it was called, covered in the village. And to block them out, I I my intent was to block them out so that at least in my mind, I can visually see what part of the village was covered, covered with that survey that we pretty much agreed to uh use as a base and then update that. Um, there was also some discussion about looking at other areas. So I think it just, I'd like to have that discussion if we think we need those other areas and nail them down, so that once the, you know, once the coordination starts with an intern, they can be formulating and collecting those additional areas as well as the update of the two thousand and seven survey, so um just we'll put that out for discussion.
So nobody, so the two things that I, when I look at, when I was looking at this survey originally, I felt were missing. One is we've got a very large mobile home park in our village.
Yeah.
Um, and having that data, or at least the survey of that that infrastructure may be helpful. And the other piece was it doesn't really look at any of the periphery growth in our community. Um, I look at it as you had a little bit north on North Street, and up now, you've got like the Meadow Lane, Devon Lane area, that's sort of the at last edge of the village. So just sort of seeing what the growth patterns are as we, as you expand out of the village and see what we have there as well is the inside of the village, we know what that, we're fairly comfortable with that. But just seeing, so it's not just what we have today, but it's also so we can see what we may have in the future. That's my two pieces I put on the study earlier.
Any comments?
So so I was thinking that first um we should, of course, do the area that was done before, because that's the only way we can have a straight one-to-one comparison. Right? That's part of it, and and then we could see how of housing uses changed in these specific areas, and we'll have definitive data on that. Whether we'll find anything useful, we don't know. I I agree with Chris about adding some other areas, um but I'm not sure how to pick them.
But the other part that we didn't, that they didn't touch on was actually the main street area, which is unusual. Unique to me because there's a lot of housing um in that area, that's that's along Main Street, down South Street. There there's a lot of rental property in that area, and along West Street, that most of what's in that black, a lot of it is single-family or multifamily homes, but it it's predominantly single-family. So I just had a look at the blocks, I was like, hmm, I thought Main Street was in it. Bad, me, just assuming.
Can you turn that?
Uh, hang on, you're asking a lot of me here. How's that?
Cool. So any so I'm hearing, I think I'd like to hone in on areas definitely, so that Shannon starts coordinating with this person, which is imminent. We have, we have a definitive list. So let's kind of talk about it a little bit. Do you have any comments, Rob?
No, it's a no.
Wait, is it just not feasible to actually do the entire town? Is that why it's not done? Because it would take too long?
Well, I think I I there is that aspect, and the other aspect is what do we want to get out of this survey? We're about to walk down a path where a lot of the discussion um from the grant point of view, um has to do with setbacks, parking, uh usage, that type of thing. So if we look at other areas, we would want to supplement or augment those types of to get those, that type, those types of information. I would, I would think, I I don't know, that that's certainly open for discussion as well, but I um you know, given, how how much do we have to do before there's a diminishing return as well, you know?
Right, because, I mean, I look at the black, the boxes that are blacked out, there's a lot of very similar housing in that area. That that's, it's sort of like the 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 center of the village, it's, God, it's a lot of single-family home homes in there, and and I just think I agree with Kevin, that needs to be part of it, so you can compare apples to apples. But for future planning, knowing what's going on, again, in your, in the Main Street, West Street area, where there's a lot of rental. Um, you you had up north here, this is sort of North Street and Plank Road area. We're seeing more growth right through there, you know, and
Right.
And it's a little more rural growth feel, but that is, when we put together the original town plan, that was sort of the next growth area. And have we, has it started to become achieved, and what can be done to try to promote that even more?
Well, should we um have an aim to uh include it where there are apartments that we know, like apartment, like over on Lover's Lane, or um, you know, further up on North.
Yes, up on, you have a mountain street, on Devon Lane, you've got two, two large apartments and one small apartment.
So is is Lover's Lane in the village planning area?
I think so.
That is.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that is, yeah, as we, with Hewitt Road, it's the the southern flat tier of it, so.
Yeah, because the.
It would be vital to know what, how many apartments there are, how many people are living in apartments that within the village and you know, what what's available now.
So I guess I I let me, let me, let me not interject.
Yeah, so I I I thi- this particular survey is on character. And so it's sort of the field density. I I agree with you, Melissa. Uses are imperative as well, and that's where I I got hung up for a minute, but it's it it, I guess it's what area do you want to look at so that you can sort of mold your next round of growth around, I guess would be and what are the pros and cons of those areas?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing I think we should remember is that this is just one tiny portion of this, it's a student who's gonna work six hours a week.
Right.
Maybe, and I presume that some of that information you're asking about, like where their apartments and who's living there, that would be done by the consultant would tell us.
Okay, that's a lot of that census-based data.
Right.
So I I I I agree, all this stuff would be great to know, but I think we have to go step by step with the student and see what the capacity is. Um, I, you know, I I teach college students. One thing I know is they're often they they undertake a lot of things all at the same time, and their capacity can be severely stressed. And if you try and put a a big load on right at the beginning, uh they may just, may just not be able to do it.
Yeah, well, we have time too, it's not.
Yeah, but I mean, we could start with one part, but my thought was we do this, right, that this is a step-by-step process that we start with one part, uh and then see what we can add on as it goes along, but we might be able to pick one or two areas in additional to, small areas to do additionally right now.
We definitely want to do Main Street and and Main and West and right in there, I mean, uh, South.
So Jeff, following your your sort of progression concept, it might be having them do the first four blocks that are on this map in a timeframe and and is that, I'd hate, I'd hate to overburden them, say, hey, we're gonna do these four plus, we're gonna add three more, two more. And at the end, we only get two, because that's all that they could really do. And at the end, we only get two, because that's all that they could really do.
Yeah.
Have them start with this. It's primary, come up with two secondary so they know that they're out there, but the primary focus is we gotta get these four done. And the sooner you get those four done, the sooner we can move on to the next step.
Or, I mean, we have another option. I'm thinking out loud now, which is. We could say, let's start with doing two of these four areas. And add two new areas.
That's, that's what I was gonna say was, do we need to do this entire area or is. You know, one street, you know, just West Pleasant or something like that. Enough of a. Data set out of this original one as a comparison.
Yeah, we're not constrained by the previous survey. So maybe we pick two of these areas.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I know, just looking at my street alone. Since this survey has been done, absolutely no changes occurred.
Well, that's useful data.
Yeah, I mean, I went through it. I was like, hey, that's exactly what it was when, when they did the survey.
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, should we focus on the places we know have changed? Or currently changing?
I, I looked at it as staying along, so Pleasant Street's one of the most densely. Populated areas, it's got a fairly deep mix. Cause if you think about it from, I mean, actually you start at Spring and if you ran Spring almost down to Pleasant. Those two blocks that are on here on the two lower blocks. That's a pretty good demographic through there, don't you think? For, for baseline of what the village has. And then Spring's got a lot of rental. Stuff that's been converted rentals as well.
So I'm not hung up on uses, I'm looking, I'm looking at physical attributes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you could pick. Any one of those four would be reasonably representative of the other. And it's, and, and if you wanted to. Look at change in use. That's relatively easy and I don't think there's a whole lot of change in. Physical dimensions in any of that either thing, you know?
Very little.
So. Lloyd, what do you, you have any thoughts?
Spread it out too far. Concentration. All these things are interesting. Seems like more than half the time is getting it started.
How about you, Bill? Bill?
Bill stepped away for a minute, it looks like.
Come back. So I guess the discussion, if we, if we want those secondary. If you've got time areas, we should identify them.
Would it be outlandish maybe that their very first assignment is to review the existing study?
No, I see, and then.
Let, let him get and have them give us what they think the timeframe is that they could. These, again, I, it's hard for me to guesstimate what they're gonna be able to achieve. And if, if they come back and say, oh yeah, we could, I could knock those, those four, all four of those blocks out again. With two quick visits to the village, I, and they feel comfortable with that, great, we have some work in the room here now. Or they're like, oh god, all four, that's, that's an entire semester.
Yeah, okay, so we will, we will stay with. So the direction will be, it's, I, what I'm hearing is we'll stay with these four blocks. Analyze them and as they are working on those, we will identify what the next step is.
And if it's taking too much time, we can modify it. Until they, they get a, they get an A no matter what, that'll, that'll motivate them.
So I think the other thing is, Chris, you, and I, and I've seen the data set before, is, is it public? Or you've got all the, like the town, the, the lot maps and. All the real estate activity and all that kind of stuff is something that. Is to point them in that direction is to, to for evaluation criteria as well.
Yeah, it's. I mean, we have all the lot maps. They can look, they can do research in the vault. I mean, we have. Actually, Melissa, all the Lister's cards have or had. That's just owner histories, doesn't have a lot of data there.
But I'm, I'm thinking so that they've something that, what do we have that they can look at remotely? As opposed to coming down here and.
Um, one of the big ones is that we, for my interactive maps.
That's what it is.
Yeah, that, that gives them a ton of. The, you can, it overlays the parcels on it, granted they're off a tiny bit, but that's trivial. And they can see. Like, one of the, one of the things we will talk about is, in, in the end with this is looking at some infill opportunities and. And sort of characteristics, they should be able to do a lot of that. Remotely.
Yeah.
And almost do their finalized, doing a drive-through. Yep, I can help them find resources if they don't have them.
So, Billy, Bill, um, we kind of did a round table on the discussion about. The blocks for the study. As well as some other potential areas in the strategy, we kind of came full circle on that, but. Um, wanna just back up a little bit and give you some time for perspective on that process.
Thank you, Kevin. I. Are we thinking now more about the intern or about the study? And. Are we refining the purpose of the study?
So the, 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 it's being the interns, we're talking about the intern assignment right now. We had talked about the, this two thousand seven density study. Being. Something that has ranged from the starting point plus something to maybe a little bit of that plus something to. Whether we would just have them start with that density study. Um, and then also part of the discussion is, is that density study is very clear on. Physical features, if you will, with a little bit of. Usage and information in there that could likely have changed. And then how do we want to pursue physical features versus uses with interns' time? Is that fair? Anybody shake your head yes, no, maybe? So.
That sounds reasonable to me, Kevin. I heard Jeff's point about. Our. Overburdened students. Who. Quite commonly liked, like, oh, it's from time to time. Imagine their capacity being greater than it actually is. I think it's important in intern study for the student to. Feel like he or she. Is doing something interesting and important and that they're, they're learning. So from my perspective, Kevin, what I might add. It's simply that we should think about the student. As well as ourselves and what they can. Experience they can get from it.
Yep. Great.
I had a question, I'm sorry, I can't remember, we just are getting one intern or?
It will be one intern, yes.
Okay.
And as there, as the slide presentation that they sent us says, this is, for most of them, this is their first. Experience in dealing with local government, so it'll be a. It'll be a learning curve for them and it is, after all, it's supposed to be a learning experience for them and whatever we get out of it is. You know, is, is plus for us. But I think we do have to keep our expectations reasonable and then just be flexible as we find out. What the student can do and what the demands are.
And I, I very selfishly will go back to my, one of my previous comments, if we. You take some time or have some time for them to develop some sort of a, a video, if you will. That's a tremendous learning opportunity for not only them, but provide us with. Some communication material propaganda, if you will.
Yeah. Well, I, I suggested, I'll talk to Shannon about this, that, you know, when we first meet with the student. That we say, here's this task, just the updating the character survey, but we also have this idea about a video. And, you know, could that fit in and would you be interested in doing that? And see what the student, how the student responds.
Right. Exactly. And who knows, maybe the, the two tasks together, they come up with. Something else that may be beneficial to, to this group as well.
Yeah, we also have no idea what skill set the student we get will have.
Exactly.
Okay. We talked about that one enough?
Yep.
Okay, so the next item will be a, a value character survey, which. Is sort of. You know, we've talked about this a little bit and I've deliberately separated them over the last few me, meetings about physical requirements and. Values. So. And the discussion today was some sort of survey, community input tool, what have you. And Jeff and Jacob and Shannon had stepped off to work that issue. I guess, Jeff, have you got any? Thoughts or directions or?
Well, as I thought about it, you know, I did. Think about it and, and talk to Shannon and Jason about it. That. You know, the first part, which we just talked about is doing the physical character survey. And then I'm a little bit at a loss on how to do the values character survey. Because, I mean, I looked at the one that Moncton did and it was, what do you like about your town? And it was all very general and all, and all the answers. The answers were all over the place. That didn't seem to me to be of tremendous value to us. If, if this, if the intern can even get to it. And I know that constructing a survey is not. Not a simple task. So I was, I, I, I sort of got in a quandary here as to exactly go ahead on this. Partly because, what is it we're trying to find out? Cause we're not doing a survey just about. I don't think, what do you like about Bristol, but. That something somehow relates to this grant. And. What, what is it we want to find out? And, and how do we frame a survey so it doesn't predispose in one way or another or. Set people off in a bad direction? I'm a little over my head on this, I think. I'm not sure how to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Jeff, did garbage in, garbage out. If, if we ask just fluffy, what do you like, what, don't you like questions? You don't get much. I mean, we could, we already can tick off the, hey, I, I like the fact that it's a walk of the village, I like, I mean. We already know what a lot of the bonuses are, so. I agree with you, it's, to me, what you really want to get. When I think about it is more the meat and potatoes of. Like growth. Where you would like, where people would like to see growth, what type of growth? Are they comfortable with the. Volume of homes that we have, with the volume of rental opportunities. Very, very specific questions, um, in my mind. I, I, I don't like fluffy questions on these, it's a waste of people's time, it's a waste of our time to read it and then try to digest data out of it. And like I said, but at the same time, you don't want to get into a. Any type of a political conundrum with it either, where, as you said, either. It sets somebody in one way or the other. Surveys are challenging. And again. I don't know, there might be, this may be who was to. I, I hate to use it again, but. Hire a third party to do this part for us, or at least create the survey and we, we crunch the data after the fact.
Yeah, that, that, that's sort of what I was thinking, is I've, I've worked in my career. I've worked with a lot of surveys, I've never constructed them or done them, but from working with people who do. I know how careful they have to be. Um, and I've, you know, had people say, well, of course they got that answer because you asked this question. And I, and, and I really don't want to do that. So I, I was a little bit leery of us trying to con, construct a survey.
Yeah, I, I'm actually taking a stats class right now that. In, in data manipulation and it, it's hitting on just what you said. You. You can feed them the questions so you get the answers you want. Whether it's intentional or not, most of the time it's unintentional. But. I, if, if you all want, I, I can dig around some and try to find resources. And get them out to you for your next meeting and. Whether it's consulting, whether it's just at least some, maybe just some great resources. For us to utilize, for you all to utilize or for whatever, to try to go down this path correctly. Um, I don't mind doing some of that research for you.
So let's reach, let's re-center here a little bit. Or my thought is to re-centering. This question came up. When we started talking about. Changing the density, particularly in the village, well, in the village area or any, any area in a. Village planning area. We were concerned, my recollection is, we were concerned about losing. The character, the desirability. If we didn't choose our changes in. Physical layout, if you will, or physical requirements. Um, or use requirements for that matter. And this was a concern. That we understand pretty clearly. The risk, what are the risks of changing the uses and. Physical parameters. With what is so well highly valued here in the, the village, so. And, and yeah, that's all soft stuff and a lot of this nebulous, but. We were trying to quantify that as, so as we walk down through this process with the grant activity, we don't lose. Vision of. What we have here. So. I guess. If there's. I guess we should. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Kevin, we want to find out. Want to get a good sense of what people would like to see. One of my concerns was that if you ask questions in a survey without context. That you will get steered in a, in a certain direction. I think. If you just say to people. Do you think Bristol should be denser? Ninety percent will say no. Right? So, so I'm wondering even if maybe the way, and now I'm just. So, so I'm wondering even if maybe the way, and now I'm just thinking out loud, maybe the way to do a character survey would be to have some some groups. Right? Like to get together, you know, you know, a contact group, not a contact group, you know, where you pull together 10 or 15 residents and say, here's what we're looking at, you know, give them an explanation. Here, here's the issues that we're dealing with. What do you think of this?
So I, I'd like to with, with that comment that I had made about the balance, I'd like to go around and just get some input on what the thought process is and the perspective we'll get amongst people. So Bill, have you got, so given, given the balance that we're trying to strike there without losing without losing or else getting predetermined knowledge or biased knowledge.
Well, it seems like we agree that it's very easy to get bias in, in a survey or, or a series of questions often unintentional. And that's one of the that's a major issue in, in all of the planning process, in my view. Because the question is, who should decide what's important as we plan the future? And some could say, well, really not, it's not just the present residents. It's what we might imagine. Future ones who would have to afford to live here, might have to commute. Some might say the state should do the planning for us. Play out one of the ideal criteria for a place like Bristol or for the entire state. These are all contentious issues. So once you turn to a survey of values or preferences, as Jeff has said, and Chris and everybody who's spoken that I, that I can think of right now, the risk of biases enormous. So I think it's because surveys are so popular. I think it's fine to do one. But I, I hope we don't I hope we don't overly rely upon it as our as our authority, as our deciding factor. These groups that Jeff was referencing and we've all while I can't think of the name for them right now myself. Yeah, we're all familiar with them and we've been either making use of them or anticipating them and them or learning from them for about 40 years that I know of officially focus groups they've been called. And they can be helpful. They have their risks too, because they tend to be self-selecting and people who have the time and the willingness to participate. Cause of bias there, but sometimes focus groups can be better than just a, a survey. So I guess my message is, Kevin, that over the years, it seems to me that our planning commission and the people who volunteered and the people who the select board has appointed has always managed to reach a pretty good, pretty good compromise, have a pretty good balance of opinions and philosophies and views. And it's worked out pretty well. And as long as we're all committed to respecting the views of others and trying to earnestly, sincerely work towards the, the, a good compromise, a good future, that will be the key element. Surveys and focus groups and any other, any other means of gathering information will be something to consider, but that's not over-reliant. That's, that's how I feel, Kevin.
Melissa?
I thought we had talked about this previously. We were considering multiple ways of getting feedback or information from town. So, I mean, survey, like you said, focus groups, different meetings. You know, it's, it seems like the more information we have, it, yes, it takes time to go through it. But if we give people of the town various options on how to give us their opinions, I think we end up better off. I mean, I don't think many people are going to want to do all of the things that we offer. I mean, they'll just pick whatever is easiest or best for them or what they have time for and, and let us know what they think.
Okay, Lloyd, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I really don't know just what they can do. Information or something, but seem to be enough questions on the survey stuff that
Rob?
Yeah, I agree with Jeff with, when I read through the Moncton one, the open-ended questions led to a lot of unproductive information, it seemed like. So I can see where trying to formulate something to get productive feedback can be very challenging. And I know that there's a timing issue as well. So I think that that's kind of our conundrum at the moment of how we get something together to be able to use it in the right timeframe. I think that we will be able to balance whatever information we get back with the caveat of how it was obtained and that it may not accurately reflect the entire town, because you tend to only get a small percentage that actually participate in that sort of stuff, no matter how many avenues you, you offer for participation. I think that the most challenging is just getting it rolling and getting something out to get something back.
Okay, thank you. So I'm hearing, you know, I'm hearing maybe focus groups may be more useful, maybe a survey at some point. And then there's a matter of resources and timing. So we had, or at least I had kind of walked down a path, this would be something that this intern does with this spring semester. Does everybody feel it's a necessary thing for them to be doing, or is this something that can be worked in over this next year or whatever? When we've got a consultant on board for direction as well?
Yeah, that's where I'm heading, Kevin, that maybe trying to shoehorn this into the intern who's pushing too much, too fast. And that, yes, we want to get local input, but we just need to think about how to do it and not necessarily move it on to this intern who, whatever skills they have, it's a complex issue. Complex task. It's much more complex than updating, you know, physical character.
Okay, any other thoughts? We just kind of keep it in mind and work on it as, as an independent thing from the intern.
And who knows if we get, if we could get, you know, another intern next fall who had a skillset to do it, then we could work on it then. But I, I don't think we should just restrict it to the intern. We, we need to think more broadly about how we want to do it.
So if everybody's in, in, in closing on this item, we'll just keep it on the agenda as an open item. And pursue it independent of an intern assignment. That makes sense? He has nodding.
Yeah, I think it is. I think, I think ultimately timeline for it to be usable is probably about a year out from now. You know, or a year plus a month or two, to be able to then post-process it and be able to use it to as relevant information as we move forward with whatever proposed changes we're making or not making.
Okay, thank you. That's the, I think that might be the end of that discussion. Anybody disagree with that?
Think that horse is dead.
Next item is new business. I have none identified. Item after that is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I actually just had a question because I don't know who would take care of this. Is the parking on Main Street, like the signage and all of that was, is that through the select board? They have any issues?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jim, you're quiet. Okay, entertaining motion adjourned.
Wait, Kevin, I have a question.
Sure.
The agenda for day, for today says the next regular planning commission meeting is February 8th, which I assume is a mistake.
That is a mistake. So the next meeting is March, is March 1.
March 1, okay.
Yeah, and that happens, and thank you for reminding me. That happens to be town meeting day. As I understand it, they're going to poll upstairs and this, this space is available.
So I spoke with Sharon, the town clerk.
Yeah.
They, depending on how much they have to do, they may, they come down here and count quite often. So the fire station should be available. And we could.
Do we want to have a meeting while town meeting is going on? It means we can't attend a meeting.
Well, our meeting starts at seven and the polls close at seven.
So the, the physical town meetings, the, the previous night, town meeting itself is on Monday. Voting is, is still seven that evening.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it, got it. Okay, that's fine.
So if you want, you're not going to chat after and how to make that happen.
Okay.
And I, I thought about that today. I'm like, as far as I know, the fire station is available. There's either a conference room downstairs or we have the big training room upstairs to devil, so. And I'll work with you on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we got motioned on, is it on the floor or do I need a motion? Looks like Rob's making that motion by the smile on his face.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Melissa's seconding. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Any objections? Okay, 9:50. I took 15 minutes, took 15 minutes from you today.
It's been worse, trust me. I've sat through worse.
All that work on the RFP, Kevin, it's really, looks great.
Yep.
No, you're welcome.
Bye-bye.